I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Corville City Council to order December 21st, 2021. Row call, please.
Mr. Foster.
Present.
Gross? Here.
Wynn?
Present.
Dodds?
Present.
Goodrich?
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and many members of the staff and employees are in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Huan. Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda's approved. Okay, this is by far the highlight of this, tonight's agenda, for me at least. This is, in ten, or eight years I've been mayor, one of the most pleasing things, the most rewarding things I've had the honor to do, is to swear in new members of our Corville Police Department. And it's so meaningful for the families, for us, for the community, to get introduced to our new officers. And it's a wonderful opportunity for the family members to also participate in it. And this is one of those events that was impacted by COVID, like so many other things in our lives, and we frankly have gotten a little bit behind. Some of the officers that are going to get sworn in tonight have actually been on the streets for, I think, close to, close to two years. So, but that doesn't subtract at all from tonight's event. It's still a very meaningful opportunity to do this formal swearing in and introduce these new officers to the, to the community. So with that, I'm going to step around, and the chief is going to introduce them, and then when they're all introduced, we will do a swearing in, a group swearing in, so.
As you bear, we hired eight officers in the pandemic affected 2020 and 2021. Seven of them are here with us tonight, many of them with family, to be sworn in with the community as their witness. In order of seniority, Sheldon Fitz joined the department in April of 2020.
Sheldon, congratulations again.
Followed by Jacob Giesi.
Jacob, congratulations again.
Mike Peterson.
Not in order.
Take your time.
He told me they were in order.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations.
What would it be if I didn't throw you a curveball?
Yep.
Corey Freeman?
There you go. Congratulations, Corey.
Matthew Lundberg. Jared Pettis. Matthew and Jared just completed the academy on Friday.
Wow. Jared?
Thanks, sir.
Yep, congratulations.
And Tylin Roberts. Ty was hired this past October, and he'll attend the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy in January.
Congratulations.
Along with the two additional hires that'll start after the first. There's our seven officers. Please in a little bit.
Yep, get cozy here.
Get used to me giving you direction.
Mask on or off?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, here, let me be on the end. How about that? That way it's more comfortable. Okay, here we go. Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me, and obviously state your own names. Aye?
Aye.
Michael Peterson.
Robert O'Donnell.
Do you solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States?
I solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa?
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Corville.
And the ordinances of the City of Corville.
I will faithfully and impartially and to the best of my ability discharge all duties of the Office of Police Officer in the City of Corville.
I will faithfully and impartially and to the best of my ability discharge all of the duties of an office of police officer in the City of Corville.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations and welcome to the force.
Thank you, sir. We're good. Congratulations to all the family, number two. Look at now me with the officers in the hall like you don't want to be.
Come on, Shane.
They're welcome to stay.
Well, that cleared them out.
That was clear crowd.
Okay, well, we'll move on then to item five, which is citizen comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us tonight about an item that's not already on the agenda. Please state your name and?
Mike Knutson, citizen of Corville.
Yep.
I have 15 minutes, right?
Minus 10.
Wanted to just acknowledge and thank Marilyn Dell for his service. I believe this is his last official service, at least as planned, for the, for the City of Corville. I want to thank you for everything you've done over the last couple decades. I don't know exactly when you started on council, but both on council and mayor, I think you've done a great job. I've observed you the last few meetings, and you'll be missed. I'm sure Megan has big shoes to fill, but we'll miss you, and just wanted to thank you publicly for all you've done.
Oh, thank you, Mike. Appreciate those comments. Anyone else like to speak to us tonight? Okay?
Hello, my name is Tara McGovern. First, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Lundell and his retirement, and thank you for your years of service. My family and I have lived in Corville for over 20 years, and I've attended the last four meetings of the Citizens Community Police Advisory Board. And I'm grateful for the smart, dedicated individuals who have been selected to serve on the board. Thank you also to Councilor Huan for being in attendance at the Police Advisory Board meetings. A civilian review board is, by definition, an entity external to the police department's internal affairs and consists of residents outside the department. And I have yet to receive a cogent answer as to why the chief of police is involved in these meetings at all, as the proceedings are intended to provide an outlet for community members to process and address police bias. I'm one of two community members to express this concern to the advisory board at the last two meetings. When I've asked questions about why the chief sits up there with the board members, why he takes the minutes and provides the agenda, with one exception, when city attorney did the, the minutes, I have been directed to the ordinance for the board, but I've read the ordinance, and there's nothing in it that explains the chief of police's involvement in the proceedings of its own advisory board. The chief can't continue to be the city's staff contact reasonably for this board. If the board is to be anything more than performative, the city needs to set it up for success, and that means providing the necessary staff infrastructure, as well as appropriate accessibility for the community. You're going to be hearing a lot more from me on the topic of accessibility in the new year, because I also have some thoughts on how this council can improve its accessibility. Appropriate community access in 2021, pandemic or not, means hybrid meetings that community members can zoom into for public comment, and it means verbatim transcripts, neither of which you're currently providing for your city council meetings. When my friend and fellow ICMA organizer Noah Peterson inquired about a hybrid option for tonight's meeting, he was told by your staff that hybrid meetings would cost the city a minimum of $10,000 to institute. I urge you to investigate that claim because Iowa City's Adcock Truth and Reconciliation Commission prioritized hybrid meetings from their inception. So as a start, you could reach out to their staff contact equity director Stephanie Bowers for advice on how she accomplished this. The Johnson County Board of Supervisors also provides hybrid meetings and is in the process of transitioning to verbatim transcripts, which is something that we also request from you. Please advise city staff that using the excuse that the city is complying with the American with Disabilities Act when residents approach them about accessibility concerns is not what our own Iowa Senator Tom Harkin intended when he authored, authored that act 31 years ago. Hybrid meetings and verbatim transcripts could not have been specified in 1990, but another document, Chapter 21 of Iowa Code, does explicitly state that the goal of law is to guarantee through open meetings that the basis and rationale of government decisions and the decisions themselves are easily accessible to the public. Any ambiguity should be settled in favor of openness. Thank you for hearing me in the spirit that my concerns are intended, as an opportunity to evolve toward more complete transparency and representation for all of our neighbors.
Thank you very much. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to us tonight? Okay, if not, we will move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, council. Before I begin, I would just like to say thank you to Mayor Lundell, and congratulations. And something that's been, I really love about you and admire is how much you care for our community, and just how, I mean, that's evident. I mean, everybody around, in here knows that, and everybody who knows you knows that. So just thank you for your years of service, and it's, I hope, just the better, bigger and better, so.
Thank you, Dan.
So I am here to echo some of the accessibility comments that Tara was talking?
Dan, we know who you are, but please, for the public, introduce yourself.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. I'm Dan Cobble. And so, one of the things that I would like to talk about is saying that I think council work sessions should start being broadcast. In Iowa City, their work sessions are broadcast along with their meetings, and I think that the occurrences that go on within those proceedings are almost as important as what happens in formal meetings, and I think that, I mean, it'd be really cool for the public to have that insight versus like having to come here to, to see the work sessions. Something, and another thing in regards to accessibility is that Corville historically has not been very good with this. Even during the height of the pandemic, citizens who wished to comment had to come here to city council to do so, to the chamber. And I know that city staff has complained about Zoom bombers, as they've called them, but if you look at the proceedings in Iowa City and with the Board of Supervisors, that hasn't really been a problem. I mean, their meetings, when Iowa City was doing Zoom, and the Board of Supervisors who still do Zoom, I mean, that's not really a factor with these proceedings, and it's actually easier to control the public over Zoom than in council chambers. So, and I, I think it's safe to say that city staff have been pretty, pretty resistant to this. Someone was told that it would be $10,000 to make this change and to have it so that the public could zoom into it. And that is a huge investment, but to me, I think that's a huge investment because, not because it's $10,000, and that's a huge amount of money, but I think that's a really great bargain for the city, because, I mean, you can look at it as that's a whole bunch of money to throw away, but you could also look at it as saying, hey, that's like a $2 Uber coupon, because when you calculate it with the citizens of Corville, it's basically like giving everybody a $2 Uber coupon to come to meetings. And that's not just citizens here to criticize you, that's developers, that's city staff, anybody who needs to come here to comment in a meeting, it would be much easier if they could do it through Zoom. So, and I mean, it's something, that kind of citizen engagement is super important to healthy local politics. And so Iowa City has been pretty resistant to implementing this, and people have talked about them, this to them for quite a while, and they've still been resistant. So arguably, somebody could come up here during every public hearing, repeat these same comments and stuff, but I have hope that Corville will be more willing to implement these changes, so you don't have to worry about that tonight. But I will say that at the last city council meeting, citizens added over an hour and a half of public comment during the agenda items, and it was topical because, I mean, for each agenda item, it's about, I mean, how the public can engage in the civic process with that agenda item. So that's everything I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Any, anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to item six, which is the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Housing Fund Contract, 11-HSG-010. This is a public hearing, includes a public hearing for the status of a funded activity for the rehabilitation of six owner-occupied single units of housing in Corville, and this is administered by the East Central Iowa Council of Governments, also known as EZCOG. So we have a staff person from EZCOG with us tonight that's going to do a brief presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Paula Mitchell with East Central Iowa Council of Governments. And as the mayor stated, this is a public hearing to consider the status of funded activities for your CDBG housing grant. So there are a few required points that we need to go over, and then if there are any questions, I'm happy to take a stab at those as well. As required for this hearing, it's noted that for general description of your accomplishments to date, a CDBG housing contract in the amount of $234,994 was awarded to the city from the Iowa Economic Development Authority with a release of funds that was issued on November 2nd of 2020. For a summary of your expenditures to date through December of 2021, a total of $57,812 has been invoiced to the city, and of that, $38,612 was for construction activities at this point, and the balance of $19,200 was for administrative and technical services. Construction items that were included through this grant were not limited to, but included the replacement of roofs, gutters, siding, windows, doors, and steps, as well as lead hazard reduction items that are required by the grant. And for a general description of remaining work to be completed, two properties have been rehabilitated to date and invoiced to the city. Two properties are under construction. One property will need to be rebid due to being over the maximum allowable per property, and one property is being income qualified. There was one property that opted out of the program due to an unplanned move, and so we're working through the waiting list to requalify another homeowner. And a completion date is anticipated for June 30th of 2022. And then for a general description of any changes to be made to the project budget, performance targets, activity schedules, scope, location, objectives, or beneficiaries, I can report that no changes or amendments have been, been made at this time, and at this time we don't anticipate any. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and then if anybody does have any questions, they can ask it during the public hearing. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on this CDBG block grant housing fund contract, and for funded activities as described. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to us tonight on this project? Any written?
No written.
Okay, any comments or questions from the council? Okay, and then I'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven is the audit report. This is our annual presentation by the, the outside auditor that has been hired by the city. In this, this year, it was Bergen KDV LLC to do the fiscal year 2021 audit report. And this has been placed on file back on December 15th, and copies are available at the Public Library and City Hall, as well as being available on the city's website. So our auditor is here tonight to hit the high points. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Is this good? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. My name is Dustin. This is our first year with the city, and we're so excited for the opportunity to be here and, and to present the, the 2021 audit. If you have any questions as I'm going through it, feel free to stop me, otherwise we can catch them at the end as well. I get so passionate about government finance that I'll, I'll probably speed right through it if nobody stops me, so. So I wanted to start with the independent auditors report. This is essentially what the city pays us for, is to express an opinion on your financial statements, and it's your responsibility as management to prepare the financial statements, and it's our responsibility as your auditors to express an opinion on them. So we do express an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion we are allowed to give as your auditors. It's the same opinion the city has received in the past, basically that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. We do issue a couple other reports I wanted to hit quick. So the first one being the Government Auditing Standards Report. So because of the level of grant activity the city has, we are required to look a little bit closer with your compliance with laws, contracts, grant agreements, and related internal controls. And we did have one finding related to that test work, so we had prior period adjustments, so cleaning up some errors that had been made in the prior year, as well as a material audit adjustment where a receipt was deposited in the wrong fund, and we had to move it for your financial statements to be correct. The second report that I wanted to talk through was the Single Audit Report. So because you, the city expends over $750,000 of federal money during the year, we have to look a little bit closer at your compliance with specific federal programs, and so this year we looked a little bit closer at your transit cluster fund and had no related findings for that test work. Last but not least is the Iowa Legal Compliance Report. So the Office of the State Auditor gives us a specific checklist of state statutes that they want us to check compliance with, and we had three findings related to that test work. They're the same findings the city received last year. So the first one being a budget finding, the, the expenditures for the year exceeded the amounts budgeted, and so we recommend that in the future, maybe pass a budget amendment to kind of acknowledge that the city does have that authority to spend those dollars. The second would be deficit fund balances. A couple of your fund balances are in deficit, so it's just mostly making sure that there's a plan to get those out of deficit and into a surplus or, or to zero them out. And the third one is interfund transfers. There were some transfers made throughout the year that weren't budgeted for or passed by a separate resolution, and so just something to acknowledge there as well. Now we'll start to dig into some of the, the high-level analysis. We'll start with the general fund, looking at the fund balance. So this is, everything on here is going, most of the stuff on here is going to be a five-year picture, and so this year it will be the far-right column. So you can see the, the number went up pretty significantly, about $4.8 million. The fund balance policy calls for about 35% of expenditures in fund balance, and right now you're sitting at about 53%. So it's, it's good to have some of that cushion with some of this uncertainty, and it's a, it's a good place to be. This is a year-over-year kind of breakout of revenues, kind of in a nice pie chart. So it was pretty consistent year-over-year. So hotel taxes, which is that burgundy, dark brown-looking one, so that one decreased about 3% due to COVID-19 and kind of the impact it had on that hotel motel tax, and intergovernmental increased about 3% due to the CARES grant that the city received. So this is a five-year picture of revenues. So taxes increased year-over-year due to an increase in the levy. Hotel motel tax did decrease, kind of like we talked about, due to COVID-19. Intergovernmental increased due to the CARES grant. Charges for services decreased due to some of the parking ref programming not happening this year due to COVID-19. This is the same kind of pie charts, except for expenditures. So the only thing worth noting here is community and economic development, which is that gray piece, decreased about 8%, and so there was a large capital purchase last year out of the general fund that, that impacted that, so that's why it decreased 8% this year. And so those, that decrease of about 8% got allocated to the, the other pieces of that pie, but that, that's probably the only thing worth noting on this one. Looking at general fund expenditures year-over-year, general government increased slightly due to the, the Johnson County Urgent Care Center contribution that the city made. Public safety increased slightly due to some vehicle purchases that were made during the year. Community economic development, so you can see that orange bar spiked way up last year. Hold on. Oh, it's, the mouse isn't showing up, but, so that middle one, that, that orange bar spiked way up due to that capital purchase, so those kind of came back down to where you would expect them this year. And then culture and recreation decreased due to the decreased programming that the city had. So now we'll take a, a high-level overview of some of your, your major enterprise funds that the city has more control over as far as how much you're charging for services and how much you're expending. So we'll start with the water fund. So the, the bar I want to focus on most is that gray bar, so that's your, your total income and loss, including depreciation. And so the water fund, the charges for service, has covered all expenses, including depreciation in all five years presented, so that's really good to see. Revenues were up a little bit due to increased usage, and expenditures were, which is the blue bar, were up a little bit due to some increased repairs and maintenance costs. Kind of the same story for the sewer fund. So again, the gray bar is positive in all five years presented, which is always good to see. Revenues were up due to increased usage, and expenses were up pretty significantly, about $1.2 million due to the city's contribution to arena core related to the, the stormwater arena project that, that they were doing. Next is the parking fund. So if you look at the gray bar, it's, it's positive in four years, and then this year there was a slight loss of about $56 million, and that was mostly due to COVID. So you can see the green bar, which is revenues, went down due to less activity due to COVID. There are less people parking. And then expenses increased a little bit due to a higher reimbursement to the University of Iowa related to the shared agreement with the MLB ramp. So with that calculation, the city just ended up owing them a little bit more after everything was said and done, and so that's why expenditures were up a little bit. Last but certainly not least, the hotel fund. So this one has obviously been impacted pretty heavily by COVID, and so you can see the, the gray bar has been negative in all five years presented. It's the unrestricted net position. Two out of the five years, it did have a, a small operating income. So it's just something to monitor. It's, it's tough because you can't, just because you have a large negative net position doesn't necessarily mean you can raise room rates, right? Because you have to stay competitive with other, with other hotels, but just something to, to monitor as you, yeah, as you look at the hotel sustainability and make, and hopefully it rebounds as that sector of the economy comes back. The next two slides are going to look at your tax capacity, levy, and rates. So the, the rate increased about 5.8% from last year. And then looking at that impact on the levy, the levy increased about 4.6% as property value stayed pretty flat and actually decreased a little bit. That's what I got. Do you have anything for me?
Well, one of the things I always like to, to think about is how we compare with other communities of similar size, perhaps. I imagine in your work, you've done audits for other cities that may be comparable to Corville, and is there anything that jumps out in your mind of either good or bad of how Corville stands up against our peers?
Um, nothing that comes to mind. You didn't get a lack of segregation comment, which means we felt that you had your, your duties properly segregated, and that, um, that's not a surprise, but it's the most common finding we give, and we didn't give it to Corville. So that, yeah, it's always nice to see that you have enough hands in every transaction to, to make sure it lands where it needs to.
Good.
Yeah, other than that, I, I guess nothing comes to mind.
Okay. Anything comments in the council or the staff?
I would just encourage everyone to take the time to go look at those charts at the end of the, because that's extremely helpful, the way it was outlined, and pretty easy to read and to look at those numbers. So those charts at the end, I think, are a really good summary to look at and see where we can improve and where we're doing much better, so.
Yeah, I would agree. I found the, the, it was, you know, I'm not as into municipal finance. I appreciate your enthusiasm a great deal. I'm so glad there are people like you. But I did, I did find it interesting, and as I was reading it, I thought it would be a helpful thing for the public just to take a look at, just to get that snapshot and to really understand the different buckets of money and the, you know, because it's not a general, one big pot of money. There are very specific uses for each, each revenue stream, and I, I felt that this was a helpful way to kind of get a handle on that.
Good. I'm glad you found it useful.
I'd just like to thank our finance department for their good work day in, day out, and I think you would agree with that.
Yeah, big, big props to Tony and his staff, a first-year audit and getting it done two months earlier than it's been done in the past. No small feat, so I appreciate all their work, and yeah, a first-year audit is definitely the most ruthless, because we have to dig into the current year, but we also have to make sure the prior year numbers are right as well. So I, I had him digging back to 2012 a couple times, so I appreciate his patience with me.
Good. Well, we hope to have you back.
I hope to be back.
Okay, well, there's nothing more. We'll move on. Thanks for coming.
Fantastic. Thank you, somebody.
We'll move on to item number eight, which is urban renewal area. This is the third and final consideration of an ordinance that sets the base value of property in the mall and Highway 6 urban renewal areas for projects that have been constructed within the last year. Don?
Ordinance number 2021-1013 and ordinance, amending ordinance number 650-679-97-786, 2001-941, 2002-95, 2013-1007, 2015-1018, 2016-1020, 2017-1016, and 2020-1015, providing the- providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the mall and Highway Six Urban Renewal Project area in the city of Corleville, County of Johnson, State of Iowa, bind for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Corleville, County of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to, and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with said urban renewal redevelopment project, introduced for adoption for the third and final consideration by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second, seconded by Gross. Any questions, comments in the council? Rockall.
Gross.
Wynn?
Aye.
Dodd?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Okay, the ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Item nine relates to precinct changes. This is a result of our increased population in Corleville from the last census, up to 22,318 residents. We will be increasing our precincts by one from seven to eight for the next election. And the, the action tonight will set the, the boundaries for these new precincts. So, for item eight, please.
Ordinance number 2021-1014 and ordinance amending Chapter Three of the Corleville Code of Ordinances 2011, as previously amended, establishing eight voting precincts in the city of Corleville was introduced for second consideration by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any comments? Rockall. Wynn?
Aye.
Dodd?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Okay, the ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. And at the last council meeting, we passed a motion for the third consideration to also be done tonight.
Ordinance number 2021-1014 and ordinance amending Chapter Three of the Corleville Code of Ordinances 2011, as previously amended, establishing eight voting precincts in the city of Corleville, Iowa, introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Wynn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd. Discussion?
I will ask just one quick question, just with the caucuses coming up. So, how does this get communicated with people? Is it the party's responsibility to make sure that they are aware of this?
For the caucuses, it specifically is for the elections. For those times, it would be the county auditors. And then, obviously, we help by publishing it in our newsletters and all of that. But for the caucuses themselves, it would be the parties.
Okay, thank you. Rockall, please. Dodd?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Wynn?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its final and third, third and final consideration, all ayes. Item 10 is the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer Project. Item A is to approve pay estimate, pay estimate number two, which is the final, to Midwest Concrete Incorporated for the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer Project in the amount of $10,106.31. I entertain a motion. So, moved, moved by Gross, seconded by?
Second.
By Wynn. Any discussion on this final payment approval? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's, motion passes, all ayes. Item B is a resolution officially accepting this project as completed.
Resolution accepting the Fifth Avenue Storm Sewer Project as completed, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Rockall. Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Wynn?
Aye.
Dodd?
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes. Item 11 is the Iowa opioid allocation. This is a motion, a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding and two participation agreements that require the city's approval before the end of the calendar year in order for the comprehensive opioid settlement agreement to be, to proceed. A resolution, Dodd?
Resolution approving an Iowa opioid allocation memorandum of agreement and those certain participation agreements for the nationwide opioid settlement introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any discussion? Would you like to share a little bit for the public?
So, yes, a while back, a consortium of attorney generals, and there were 66 counties in Iowa who sued various drug manufacturers and distributors for costs associated with the opioid crisis. These attorneys and the AGs from these states have had made a settlement with the, I think it's Jansen and some of the distributors. And the reason they are pushing all, all the cities and the counties to participate is the more cities and counties of correct, of large enough size that participate, the more money the state of Iowa gets for participating in the settlement. So, this is just something that we've, I mean, come down to it, Corleville's not going to get very much money, if at all. But it helps the state to distribute and, and use some of these funds to help people who are affected by this epidemic.
So, does the AG's office establish the formula that's used to distribute funds?
There, there, yeah, there's going to be a formula that I think, it, it's in the, we look at these agreements, there's a formula for each county and a formula for, so. It's, I mean, it's not like it's going to trickle down a lot, but what we're doing is we're assisting Iowa to get as much money as Iowa can get. So, the more cities and, so the League of Cities, the, have been pushing this. And, you know, we've had conference calls with the AG's office too, so. And I think the other cities, I know Iowa City, North Liberty, and the county have passed it at their last meeting also.
Thank you. But no Wynn falls?
There is not going to be a, this is not something we're going to get paid a lot of money for, no.
That's disappointing, okay. Any other questions? Rockall. Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Wynn?
Aye.
Dodd?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes. Item 12 is the City Administrator Compensation Package. This is a resolution that will increase Kelly Hayward's annual salary by 3%, the same amount that was received by other city employees. At the last council meeting, we, we did a evaluation, the council did an evaluation of his performance and gave him outstanding, great scores. And just expressed our appreciation of how, how grateful we are that Kelly's been and lucky that Kelly's been able to be with us for 33 years, I think. So, it's, this, we're, I think we're happy to, I know we're happy to pass this bump of 3% tonight, so. Resolution, please?
Resolution approving a compensation package for the city administrator, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd. Any further comments?
Well, just dovetail what the mayor said, Kelly, just especially in these turbulent times of the last year, year and a half, that's just, it's reassuring to have a steady guidance from the city manager's position and city minister's position. So, I think we're really fortunate that we have someone with your experience in that chair. So, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Well done. Rockall, please. Gross?
Aye.
Wynn?
Aye.
Dodd?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 13 is procurement cards. This is a resolution that allows the position of Parks Maintenance Worker Three to be issued a procurement card from the city.
Resolution designating the position of Parks Maintenance Worker Three to the list of certain positions allowed to be issued a procurement card pursuant to the Corleville purchasing policy, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Wynn. Any questions or comments? Rockall. Wynn?
Aye.
Dodd?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item 14 is the annual appointment of boards and commissions members. I'll read through these, these are my recommendations. They all, all of these expire on December 31st of the year, I'm going to say. And with one exception, which I'll note when I come to them, these are all Corleville residents. So, the Civil Service Commission appoint Ron Wenman for a term that ends in 2025. Board of Adjustment, reappoint Carla Praska and reappoint Sherry Nicola to terms that end in 2026. The Corleville Arts Commission, this is the one, the first one on this is the one exception. Reappoint Robert Goodfellow. Bob lives in Iowa City, and the structure of the Corleville Arts Commission allows for one member to reside outside the city of Corleville. So, Bob fills that role. Also, reappoint Susan Sandrell and appoint Chloe Angel. The first two, Mr. Goodfellow and Ms. Sandrell, their terms end in 2024. And Ms. Angel is filling an unexpired term that ends in 2022. Parks and Rec, appoint Kevin Goulding and Mackenzie Graham to terms that end in 2024. And lastly, Planning and Zoning, appoint Eve Casserly, Bradley Friedhoff, and Dan Holderness to terms ending in 2026. I entertain a motion to concur with these recommendations.
So, move.
Moved by Wynn, seconded by?
Second.
By Foster. Any discussion?
Just, just one thing, mayor, just to make sure too, on Chloe's name, it is A-N-G-Y-A, not A-M. So, just for official.
Okay, well, that, that was part of the reason I had a hard time.
Now, it makes sense why you asked me how to pronounce it, yeah.
Okay.
It was misspelled, yeah.
Everyone should have their names spelled correctly, thank you.
Mayor, is there a way that we could find out the people who are leaving those positions so that we could thank them?
Sure, this, the clerk can give you that information.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I would just like to add that, to thank those that are completing their term and, and welcome to the new members because this is a big deal, serving your community and a big commitment. And we appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
And in some cases, this year, we had more applicants than we did openings. So, not everyone was appointed that applied, and we appreciate those that didn't make it this year, but not to be discouraged that there's always more openings coming up. And it's a, I always tell people, it's a great way to get involved in city government. Rockall, please. Or just a motion, okay. All in favor of the motion for these appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, council. Item 15, I'd consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar A through N inclusive.
Okay, moved by Dodd, seconded by?
Second.
By Wynn? Any questions? Rockall. Wynn?
Aye.
Dodd?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Item 16 is the City Administrator's Report.
Thank you, mayor. I'd just like to remind people that next Tuesday night, December 28th, at Brown Deer Golf Course, from 5:00 to 7:00, we'll be having a reception for your retirement and encourage people to come out. And I would just like to thank you for your service and all of these years that we were able to work together. And we talk a lot about your retirement as mayor, but I don't know that people really think back, it was more that you've done for the city than just as mayor. And you were a volunteer firefighter, you were on the Corleville Library Board for many, many years, 20 years. Then a city council member, and then the mayor. And not only did you serve our community, but then you were also president of the Iowa League of Cities. So, you represented mayors from all across the state, founded a organization of mayors for the League of Cities, and also served national League of Cities roles as well. So, you've given us a lot of good service and just appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you, Kelly. Yeah, it's, it's a lot, a lot that I'm going to miss than what you just said, so. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Well, now it's my turn to, to say a few words. Most importantly, I better tell people that with the Christmas holiday, or holidays coming up with Christmas and New Year's, that your garbage is not going to be impacted, your, it's collected, it'll be the same. So, I have to always say that. But basically on.
I hope you pass that on to Megan, that that's like always a priority.
I know.
People want to know when their garbage is going to get picked up.
Including my husband.
But for Christmas Eve, which is Friday, and Christmas Day, which then is Saturday, more or less, all city services and departments are closed. The exception is on Christmas Eve, transit will operate a Saturday schedule up until 6:00 PM. And then, for the rest of the period, holiday period, just go to the website. There's some hours that the swimming pool is open and things like that. But best just to go look it up on, on the city webpage. Okay. A few words here, I won't go on too long, but it's my opportunity to say a few words. So, I've been on the council for 10 years, starting actually November 1st or 3rd, I think, was the election in 2003, because that was Dave Jacoby's vacant seat, and I was elected to fill that. And so, as Hi realizes, when you're elected to fill an open seat, you take office immediately. So, I've actually was on the council 10 years and two months. And then, this is my eighth year as mayor, so a little over 18 years. And so, I went through with the help of a list that the city clerk gave me today to see who all I served with during these years. And actually, the number of council members isn't that long, as I thought it might be for 18 years. Of course, I started serving under Jim Foster, the late, great mayor of Corleville and a great mentor to me. My first council, I won't go through, I'll just list names of people I served with. I served with Henry Hurwig, Tom Gill, Gene Schnacki, John Y., Mitch Gross, Bill Hoft, Jill Dodds, Lori Goodrich, Megan Foster, and Hi Wynn. That's 10 council members. I, I, I actually would, would have thought it was going to be longer than 10 council members and, and one mayor. And I asked Diana after I put this together, I think she guessed 16. So, it just seemed, it seemed like it would be more than that. But that just shows our longevity on the council. And admittedly, over those years, I missed a few council meetings here and there, here and there for various reasons. But we also had a few extra meetings. So, during that time, that equates to a total of 436 council, city council meetings, 242 while I was on the council, and 190 as I was mayor. Diana, as you know, was on the council for 15 years before me. So, that's 33 years between us. We've been married for 39 years. So, all but six years of our marriage, one of us has not been home on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. So, we can start watching TV together on those Tuesday nights, I guess, so. You know, we've, we've been through so many things, but we've survived it and come out a better community during, during this time that I've been graced to be a part of it. And none of this is, has, I'm only a small piece of, of a great, great team we have here, including the staff and the city council. But, you know, you think back, and one of the, the very first things that I dipped my toes into as soon as I got, took the oath, sworn in on that November of 2003, was the rainforest project. We were right in the middle of deciding whether we wanted to move forward with the, with the group to construct a, a large rainforest, artificial rainforest in the Iowa River Landing. And the council was more or less split 3-3. And so, I came on board and, and was the deciding vote. And there were some really contentious discussions amongst the council with the promoters of the project. And obviously, it, it didn't, didn't, didn't happen. But we did, we did move forward for a while, but then it, we realized it just wasn't an appropriate use of that land and for the city to be involved in. Then it was the Stories Project, which was essentially on that same piece of land. We're talking north of the Marriott Hotel parking ramp, basically. And the Stories Project was a, a fine project that was going to be basically kind of like a Hall of Fame to literature and, and piggybacking on this area's great history of, of literature and the writers' workshop and so forth at the University of Iowa. Again, the, the day that we really had this kickoff event, I think some dignitaries were in town to really kick off our involvement with the Stories Project was the same day that the water started going over the dam at the reservoir. So, that, that project quickly had to take a backstage to epic flooding in our community and never really got revived after that. Which is all okay, because look, look what we have down there now, you know? No one can argue with the success of the Iowa River Landing now. You know, we went through the whole hotel construction and being an owner of the hotel and the design process. And that, that was something unusual for, for us, for any city, and in particular, one as small as, as Corleville is, to be owning a, a full-scale hotel like we do. Over the years, I can think of multiple legal challenges that the council faced. And it's so funny, those legal challenges, almost all of them were brought by businesspeople that are now our friends and our partners on projects. But, but back then, you know, they, they had issues with, basically financial issues within the city and. within the city, and, and, and it was very contentious, and they were certainly not our friends back then, but it's funny, it's the old thing, don't burn your bridges, because you never know when you're going to be a partner with the, with the, if you burn those bridges again. So, of course, you know, you know, what we faced over the years, we faced epic floods, durachos, pandemic, social unrest, Republican legislature and governor, there's certainly been a challenge to city government. But what we've come through is financial stability, what we heard tonight is certainly attest that of our, our great financial situation, premium services that we provide our citizens and businesses, IRL development, you know, things that aren't very glamorous, but you know, the, the consistent and outstanding water sewer service, water and sewer, police, fire, libraries, parks and rec, I mean, there's, there've been no bumps in the road of any of those, and, and it's just been great what we, as a team, again, all of us have been able to achieve. And it just all results in what's been coined for years as Corleville pride. We are all so proud of this community, and that, I have no doubt that all this will continue. You know, there'll be challenges in the future, every, every council faces new challenges every year, but I have confidence that the partnership between the staff and, and the council, things will be just fine, so. With that, those are my, everything I wrote down to say tonight, and it's a good gig, and those of you that are able to come to the event on next Tuesday night, the twenty-eighth, you might just hear the same thing over again. Okay, city attorneys' report.
Well, as I mentioned last meeting, and this was the time for Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you here and all of you out there. Nothing else, Kevin?
Yeah, I was just thinking of my twenty-two years and been two mayors, Mayor Fawcett and Mayor Lundell, and next, and first meeting, JR, be the first meeting I ever had without a Lundell in, participating in the meetings in my twenty-two years, so. Thank you, thank you for your service.
You bet. Okay, committee and council members' report. Lori, you want to go first?
Sure, sure. As you were talking about all of this, I was reminiscing that I was fortunate enough to be voted into the vacant seat that you left when you became mayor, so I've worked with you for eight years and, and with our great team here, and I think of the flood protection completed and Coral Ridge Avenue and all the trails and park additions that we've had, and your great involvement in, it's already been mentioned, the League of Cities, and then the arena, of course, is, is another accomplishment of these last few years. One of my favorite memories probably is you and Diana at Winterfest, roasting chestnuts for everyone.
I was just talking something with someone the other day about that, too, that, that was a, a good tradition for several years.
It was, and it was cold sometimes, too, yeah, appreciate that. Want to congratulate Mayor, or Police Chief Crone on his great hire, great hires, some great, I've just had a little opportunity to get to know some of them and have enjoyed so much, and really appreciate the work that you're doing in public safety, and want to wish everyone, I believe in Christmas and the newborn child that was born for everyone, wish everyone a Merry Christmas that believe in that, and Happy New Year, Happy Holidays.
Thank you. We'll just move this way, Jill?
All right, thank you, mayor, for all of your service. I won't reiterate all of your long list of accomplishments, but thank you for your service. One that they did skip was all of the Fourth of Julys, that we've, we've had a lot of good times in the parades and, and the Bucket Brigade at night, fireworks and all those sort of things. Otherwise, I just want to put my nurse hat on for a minute, talk about the, the variant and how the Omicron is now the dominant variant, and please vaccinate, then boost, and wear your mask, and then Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and Happy New Year to everyone.
All right.
Thank you, mayor. First, I would like to congratulate you on your retirement. I am sad to say that I will miss your retirement party next Tuesday, because I will be out town visiting family.
I'm glad I, you, you heard it tonight first.
Yes.
That's my rehearsal tonight, so.
But I will be there in spirit, and thank you for your leadership and service, you know, to our great city these past decade, between you and Diana, so thank you so much. Second, I'm looking forward to serving with our first ever elected Madam Mayor coming New Year, and council-elect Mike Knusen. And then finally, I would like to wish everyone a safe, healthy, and happy holiday. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Mitch?
Well, I have some announcements that don't involve your retirement, so I'll, I'll get to it, I'll get to it, but I do want to say a couple of things, first and foremost. First of all, I, one announcement that we're really thrilled that next year, Corleville at the Extreme Arena will be hosting the state volleyball tournament. I was part of that process of trying to get that bid, and I got to give a huge kudos to Josh Schomburger and the people at the CBB, because it was something we've worked really hard on, and to be honest, I did not think that was going to happen, but I think it's going to be a huge boon to the economy and for the athletes at the high school level to be able to just drive down the street to participate, so huge, huge news for the city. The other thing, last Tuesday, I was able to attend the NAACP Justice on, or Summit on Justice and Shorter Practices, and it was a fantastic event, it was mostly city, city staffs, educators, and law enforcement, so, you know, I fit into two of those three categories. It was a, just a really good event and great speakers, the keynote speaker was the Cobb County District Attorney who had at the prosecution the Mar Albury case, and it was just very timely and just had a chance to talk with Betty Andrews from the NAACP, who did help with the review board ordinance here that we have, so I'm, I'm looking forward to continuing that and, and taking kind of what I gleaned and gathered from that conference and applying that here. And likewise, I do want to congratulate our newest police officers and wish them the very, very best as they begin to serve our community. And finally, with you, mayor, same thing as I've just been reflecting, you know, I, I remember when I decided to run in two thousand and seven, you and Diana were a huge support back then and encouraged me to do so, and I appreciate that, and your friendship and your mentorship through all these years has been just really appreciated. It's been an honor to serve as your mayor pro tem during this entire time, and as I just have reflected, too, it's a, it's been quite a ride, and, and thinking about just where things have gone, and, and Kelly and I received a really nice email the other day from Paul Busch from the Iowa River Landing Development. I didn't tell you this, Kelly, the irony, I was actually shopping down there when, when I got this, and he was just talking about where that development started and where it is now, and I think that's a testament, you know, just from you, from being on council then to being the mayor, and I've always viewed personally the mayor as kind of a, I want to say just a figurehead, but kind of a head coach position that, that kind of guides and drives, and I think you've done a really good job of kind of keeping the team, you know, allowing the team to have dissent, and, you know, you and I haven't always agreed on every single topic, but it was always respectful, and I've always appreciated that from you, and I'm just, just going to miss you a lot and wish you the very, very best, and I'm glad you and Diana are going to have some Tuesday nights together, so best wishes, mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mitch.
Yep.
And I think appropriately, the last but not least is Mayor-elect Foster, and I just wanted to point out that she is a workaholic, because we always get the agendas, draft agendas for upcoming meeting, and at four-thirty on January first is, is the next meeting, according to this document, so you're going to start on the very first day of January.
This might be the first veto that I've ever, ever had here.
Okay, Megan?
Well, I just first wanted to start by congratulating our new officers that were sworn in tonight, and thank you to Chief Crone for, for all of, all of your work, and wish them the very best as they serve our community. I, you know, I don't, I don't know quite what to say, because I, I know I have really big shoes to fill, and I am humbled and honored and scared, honestly, to, to step into this role, because I, I know the, the legacy of service that I am following, and it's inspiring when you, when you think back on all of your years, from the, what Kelly mentioned, the, the fire department, the, the library, all the, your service on the council and, and all of that, and, and then to think about how, you know, when, when you are, when you the, as an individual are in a role of public service, your family also becomes a part of that, and that is evident, you know, not only in, in your family, but like, it's, it's double with Diana's service as well, so the service of the entire Lundell family is just tremendous and inspiring, and you can see the love that you all have had for your community everywhere, anytime you look around Corleville. So, I am grateful that I got to serve with you, I am grateful for your mentorship, I am grateful that I got to learn from you, and I am grateful that you're not going anywhere, because I have a feeling that, that I am, I'm going to be calling you, I'll try not to bother you a whole lot, because I know that you're going to be driving Matt Zamboni, so, but just really grateful for everything that you have, have done for this community. I love the, the coach metaphor, I, you are a great coach, and you, you remind me of my favorite fictional coach, Ted Lasso, and I always think of the, the quote from the show, when, when he, he talks about being curious and not judgmental, and I think that that is something that, that I see in you and in your leadership, and I, I really appreciate that, and I just wish you well, and you deserve, you deserve the, the rest and, and everything, so thank you.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to say happy holidays to, to everyone, I hope everybody has a healthy and safe and restful time these next couple of weeks, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for those kind comments, all of you. Okay, shall we adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you again.